Tonight. And I will now open the Estacada City Council meeting to order. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Sadie, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Dunsmir.
Present.
Counselor Gates.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Littkey. Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here. Thank you very much. We are at the first citizen and community group comments. Do I have anybody in the holding?
I've got one hand raised and it's Kurt. So I will bring Kurt in and Kurt, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, how are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you, sir?
Good. I live in city limits and I'm sorry, Melanie, but you got a couple of emails from me last week that probably weren't too nice. We've got someone on Schafford that decided to get a couple of roosters and we need to try to figure out what direction we're gonna go with this. I mean, I love chickens. I've got four. They're for eggs, but for somebody to have a rooster starting to crow at like 4:15 in the morning and then get done at 10:00 at night, it's getting old. So I just want to bring that to the city council's attention. Roosters are not allowed in the city limits, so I'm just trying to figure out what to do to get at least three of my neighbors on board with getting rid of the roosters.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. Melanie, we do have an ordinance sitting in place. Is there something we can do to expedite this?
Yes, yeah, we will work on that through code enforcement and probably doing some education. Maybe people don't realize, you know, that roosters are not allowed. So I could do, take a couple of different approaches with education and also reach out with code enforcement. So that's the peaceful morning and evening sleep is not listening to a rooster crowing.
Yeah, no, it's not pleasant. Kurt, we appreciate you coming forward and I hope this helps with the future.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in the holding?
Yes, we have John McAdoo.
Okay. John, how are you, sir?
I'm doing good. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, thank you for giving me a few minutes. I had a little concern about discontinuing of the invocation by the city and I just wanted to take a few minutes. I believe I gave some handouts to the city counselors. And that showed cities that are still holding the invocations and some current law that shows public invocations. But I thought I'd go over a little history. America was founded on a Christian, as a Christian nation. In April 1607, the first landing at Cape Henry, when they arrived on shore there, they erected a cross. They thanked the Almighty God for their safe over three and a half month journey across that ocean and dedicated this land to Almighty God. And approximately 11 years later, the pilgrims landed in Plymouth, Massachusetts. And if you read the Mayflower Compact, God is mentioned in there. In 1775, the Continental Army held prayer service every morning. And General George Washington was known for praying before he went into some major battles. And I believe that divine intervention brought us victory over the largest military in the world at that time. The Constitutional Convention of 1787, after four or five weeks of despair and desperation, Brent Benjamin Franklin recommended a chaplain be appointed to lead in prayer daily. Thus, our constitution was finally approved. Abraham Lincoln called for a national day of prayer and fasting in 1863 during the major battles in the Civil War. In 1952, President Truman signed a joint resolution of Congress calling for a national day of prayer. And President Reagan signed a joint resolution amending that resolution to designate the first Thursday of May as a national day of prayer. So if you look back in history, way back thousands and thousands of years, cities that are not cities, but empires that walked away from God and tried to run things on their own were eventually destroyed. Maybe they lasted 250 years at the max. Some of them were gone in 100 years. So finally, I would say there's only one true God, Creator of the heavens, the earth, the seas, and all that is in Him. He created each and every one of us, believe it or not. He knew each one of us before we were formed in our mother's womb. So I thank you for the time. I want to make sure you had up to date information and let you know that other cities that are still holding the invocations and maybe you can reconsider this. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, McAdoo. We appreciate it. Okay, anybody else in the holding?
Nope, no other hands.
No? Okay. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Number first.
I'll second it.
Number first and second, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. We have department committee reports. Do any of you have any reports from your groups? Have you met since we last talked? I don't know. I don't think anybody has. Charity?
I just have a quick school board report. I guess the biggest news to report on would be for parents to pay attention tomorrow. There was a Facebook Live and they will be, Superintendent Carpenter will be answering questions regarding the proposed three-year rollout of a new calendar year. They're looking at the four-day-a-week model, little bit longer school year, et cetera, et cetera. Won't go into the weeds of all of it. And he, he can answer any parent questions about that tomorrow. What else? Oh, also at the board meeting again, talking about you can take a deeper dive and there are some links also through the Estacada webpage, the school webpage on the turf field. So just that that's moving along and kind of the goal, some dates and goals that are in place for that. There's a video about that as well. And yeah, those were kind of the big takeaways, especially that calendar. So if you have kids in the school system, check that out because that's going to affect parent schedules as well. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Charity. Anybody else got anything? No? Okay, we will move into the interim city manager's report. Melanie, have you had a chance to put something together?
Okay, yes, I have a few things to share. First of all, I wanted to address the C4 committee as we were doing liaison appointment and volunteers for at the workshop last Sunday. And then we brought up C4 and I should have known this, but didn't, that C4 is actually appointed every other year. And so, and then we checked with the person at the county who staffs that and we got a little bit of confusing information there. But looking back at minutes, last year, Mayor Drinkwine and Counselor Dunsmir were voted to continue on as the representatives on that committee. And so that was, would be for 2021 and 2022. And when we hit that odd numbered year next year, we'll vote again to choose a representative. So that is what we have found out and I wish I could have shared that with you on Sunday, but now we know. So I wanted that to be reflected in the minutes that on Sunday, we had made a different decision. And now looking back, this is, it's Mayor Drinkwine and Counselor Dunsmir. And Counselor Dunsmir has a question.
Um, memory doesn't serve me wrong. Back in 2019, when I originally took my seat as the alternate on the C4, I actually was also replacing someone mid-year. And we did have that vote at the city council meeting. Would it be possible for me to essentially resign from the C4 as the alternate? And then that way, we as a city can vote to appoint someone else as the alternate for that seat? Is that a possibility? And if you don't know the answer to that, that's, that's fine. Can you, do you mind asking someone at the county? Just because Thursdays are going to be pretty inconvenient for me moving forward. And I'd like to, to see Charity have an, I'm sorry, Counselor Hughes, have an opportunity to, to serve in that seat if that's something that she's interested in.
Okay, Sadie, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I don't think that'll be a problem at all.
Okay. And just let me know if I need to like draft up some sort of resignation letter or something. I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, I'll check with him tomorrow, but I, I think that'd be fine.
All right. Thank you, Sadie.
Okay. And then we would recommend that Counselor Hughes be appointed as the alternate, correct? Okay. And that's still all right with you, Counselor Hughes?
Yep, that works for me.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, perfect. Okay, thank you for that. And then just a couple of quick announcements. Staff is working very hard on the budget. This is budget season. There's a lot of preparation that takes place to get the budget planned out and ready to go for our budget committee meeting and then bringing it back to the council for adoption. So each department is working with Sadie as the finance director and then she'll pull all the details together. And so we're just, they're just working hard on that. And it's good. It gets us thinking ahead and making sure that we're covering all the bases and knowing what our work plans are. So and then Wade Creek Part Three, the community building will be in the framing stage soon. Right now, it's been a lot of dirt and dead trees and rocks and so, and concrete. So the framing is just about to start on the community building and then you'll see that taking shape. We're still fundraising so that we can maximize the grant that we got from the Ford Family Foundation. They awarded us a grant of, it's a matching grant up to $200,000. And so so far, I haven't, I'm not exact on the dollars, but we're at about about $115,000, $117,000 that has been raised locally and they'll match that dollar for dollar. And then anything going forward, they'll continue to match. Our deadline is March 31st. And so we would like to raise that last $85,000, give or take, so that we can maximize that grant. So if anybody has questions about that, that we have a webpage up and they can always call and talk to me about the project. It's, I think it's going to be phenomenal. So we're excited about it. And then upcoming workshops, you have February 28th, you're going to have your regular council meeting at seven, but also at 6:00 PM before that, you will have the Housing Needs Analysis Workshop. And that meeting will be on every, all on Zoom. And then we'll decide whether we want to make a change going into March as far as how we're meeting. But then March 1st, you will have an executive session with Jensen Strategies. And so since it's executive session, it's just the city council. There's no members of the public that are, will be attending that. And they will review all the applicants for the city manager position. And that will be an in-person executive session meeting beginning at six o'clock. So that is that. And then lastly, I would wanted to make a recommendation or present a request to you for a temporary salary adjustment for the added responsibilities for fulfilling the role of the interim city manager. The difference, I was trying to think of a logical way to do this, and the difference between step one of assistant city manager and then step one of city manager is approximately $1,600 a month. And so I would like to ask that the interim city manager have a temporary adjustment of $1,000 a month. And then the finance director, city recorder would receive a $600 temporary adjustment because I will be working very closely with her at this time. And I'm putting, sharing a lot of responsibility that is going on to her. So thank you for that. But I would like to make that request or recommendation, see what you think. The adjustment, we could start that February 16th because that's the new pay period that's coming up would be simple. And then just until the new city manager takes their position. So when they come on board, then we just go back to regular. So.
So do you need a motion or something to do this? Or is this something we can consensus?
We would need, we would need a motion. Auditor likes to see that a motion.
Why don't we, why don't we put that motion in play right now so that we can get this done with? Because I think staff needs to be compensated for the, for the time in between. I, I don't think there's an argument in the room to that effect. So I'm going to ask that somebody put a motion forward to extend their interim pay for the city manager and the finance director.
I move so.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Oh, Charity can second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good. Carry on, Melanie. I think you're just fine.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And that is all that I have for my report tonight unless there's any questions from the council.
No, I think everybody's clear on that. We appreciate your report. And we hope that maybe you'll have many more of those. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, we are now at the public hearing. I will now close the city council meeting and open the public hearing. It's the public hearing annexation application for 2022-02, annexing of 34E21 tax lot 1100. So does Taylor want to speak to this?
That's me. Yep, that's me. And I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right. So you should all see my presentation on the screen now.
Yep, we see it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Okay, so yes, this is application file number 2022-02-annex. The planning commission reviewed this application on January 27th and has forwarded this recommendation to you for the final decision unless it is for some reason appealed to Luba. And yeah, this is another straightforward, very simple annexation application. I've kept the presentation brief. Just summarizing the information that's necessary to determine whether or not it meets the code criteria for approval. And this application does not include any development with it. And they, they didn't, they also didn't indicate any interest in future development, which we do sometimes see with these annexations. This person is literally just annexing in order to connect their house to city water, which they haven't had for a while. And I think they'll speak to that at the end of this. But okay, so that's that. Moving forward. The applicant is Olena Wright and the property is 31498 Southeast Independence Avenue. It's outlined here in blue. Currently, it is zoned with Clockmouth County Rural Residential Farm Forest, five acre. It's a mouthful. And whenever it comes into city limits, it will be zoned as it's designated on the comprehensive plan map, which is low-density residential or R1 zoning. We're looking at about 2.6 acres of property. It's kind of in the eastern part of the city. Not adjacent to the urban growth boundary, but near to it. And it is at the end of Independence Avenue. I guess you can see that a little bit better on, on here. Independence Avenue comes up from Copeland, which is south of the edge of the screen here. So Copeland Road comes down where my cursor is. Independence Avenue comes up. There's the property. Like I said, the proposal is just to bring the property into city limits. No proposed zone change from what's designated on the comp plan map. Technically, there is an automatic rezone from county zoning to city zoning, but we, we don't need to review that the same way that we review a designation change request. The site and vicinity. So tax lot 1100, it's outlined again in blue. It's kind of an almost square lot with a little chunk out of the southwestern corner. Currently just developed with a single-family home, some outbuildings. It has a well which is broken and a septic system. And yeah, so they'll be, they will be bringing city water to the property. The property doesn't have any known hazards, endangered species, vulnerable wildlife habitats, et cetera. And I should have shown this on the screen, but it's back here. It does abut city limits on its southern property line. So you're all familiar with CMAP at this point. The darker kind of tan properties are all in city limits and the white properties are out of city limits. Okay, so as for approval criteria, it does need to comply with the applicable statewide planning goals as well as of course our comprehensive plan goals and our development code. So the statewide planning goals and our comp plan goals are very much in alignment. And so looking at those, we are going to look. I put them up here. No, I didn't. So because it's a, it's a residential land, land use application, we're looking at the goals related to housing. And so chapter eight of our comp plan and goal 10 of the statewide planning goals, those all include housing-related policies. Our comprehensive plan adopts the findings from the 2019 Clockmouth County Regional Housing Needs Analysis. It found that we will have a need for all types of housing, including low-density residential housing, which is what this will be zoned when it is annexed. And so that zone change from the county's lower-density residential zoning to the city's slightly higher residential density, that will serve that need for land that will allow for single-family homes, manufactured homes, ADUs. You can put duplexes there if you get a conditional use permit. All of those housing types were identified as projected to be needed in the 20-year planning period from that Housing Needs Analysis. So that meets the statewide and local comp plan housing goals for those reasons. And then we also look at the development code criteria. We have to make sure it is within the urban growth boundary. Yes, it is. Adjacent to city limits. Yes, it is. The proposed use has to comply with the comprehensive plan map. Like I said, they're not proposing any development, but the, what we're looking at here is that the zoning that they are proposing, which is no change, is that zoning compliant with the comp plan map? And if they are requesting a zone change, is that zoning, is the proposed zoning still compliant with the comprehensive plan in general? They're not even requesting that. So we don't need to get in that. And then lastly, does does the city's sewer and water system have enough capacity to accommodate the, the development that the property will become eligible for when it's annexed? So they're not proposing any development, but when this property does come in, they could decide, I want to subdivide. And if they meet all of the other criteria, then they're eligible to go forward and subdivide. So we need to review the capacity of those systems at the time of annexation. So yes, the statement from the city engineer was that the current capacity of urban services does exist to serve this. And then lastly, as we've discussed before, there are outdated sections of our code that are not legal to enforce. The fire and school districts have a statutory obligation to accommodate whatever growth happens within the boundaries of their district, not the other way around. And so this is one of those code sections that we need to go back and yeah, revisit and maybe update that section of the code. Similarly, our police service agreement with the county sheriff is based on the population size and, you know, kind of the data that we receive and it responds to that accordingly. So that continues to be adjusted as growth occurs. And yeah, I think that about covers it. So looking at the conditions of approval, very standard annexation conditions of approval. The only thing here that the applicant needs to be aware of, I think specifically is that last one, which is that the property owner signs a waiver of remonstrance, which basically says if or when they do decide to subdivide the property, they agree to dedicate whatever right of way is necessary to make sure that all of the new lots have frontage on a street. And that's that. Any questions?
You know, I think that was pretty clear. Are there any questions from council before I move on? Okay. Is there any correspondence regarding this application to?
No, there's not.
Okay. I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing of the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. A failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, is the applicant anywhere on this or is she right there?
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay, with the applicant, please come forward and come to the microphone. Is there anything that you wish to say?
Um, I mean, I think Taylor pretty much covered everything. I've just, I've been dealing with this for almost 10 years. So I've been out of water actually since August. So any help would be much appreciated.
All right. Well, that's a good cause, definitely. Do the council, does council have anything they wish to ask her? Are we all good? Okay, well, we appreciate you coming in tonight and we, we'll try to get you water as soon as possible. That's pretty important stuff. So. All right. There's no request forms. So the staff or anybody have anything else to add to this? No? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And we will go back into the city council meeting. Okay, so you need a motion on this? Is that what I'm hearing here? Okay, so can I get a motion on the floor?
I move to approve Anna or 2022-02-annex. Yes, I move to approve that.
Okay.
All second.
All right, I got a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. And thank you, Taylor. That was very well presented. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Now we are at council business. So I have an ordinance 2022-002 and ordinance amending sections 15.08.030, Board of Appeals of Title 15, Buildings in Construction of the Estacada Municipal Code. So I will hand that over. Whoever's going to discuss that, it's going to be you, Melanie?
Yes, I can speak to that. That is a mouthful. So thank you for opening that up. But I just want to say on that regarding this, staff has been working with Northwest Code Professionals, which is our contract building official, to make sure that the city has everything in place for our building department to meet new requirements brought about by the state in SB 866. And making this adjustment to our code for our appeals board is, I said it's the last step. It's nearly the last step because I didn't get through a little one-hour training I was supposed to take last week. So I will be finishing that up. I've been appointed as the authorized employee, which is another step that had to be taken. They're, I think, putting in place just some real stringent safeguards for cities or counties who have contract building officials rather than having a person on staff who's your building official. And so we are, are recommending, the staff is recommending to revise the municipal code in that section. We already had an appeals board established, but we needed to modify that slightly to meet the state requirements. So the, who would be on this board would be the city council and then the building official of Clockmouth County or of an adjacent county. And we were allowed to have that variation there just in case the building official of Clockmouth County didn't have the time capacity or something at the time we needed to have a, pull the appeals board together. Most, all of the issues are disagreement. Uh, most all of the issues or disagreements, and I noted this in the staff report, they're almost always resolved informally and wouldn't rise to this level. But we do need to have this appeals board in place. Um, just in case that there is ever an appeal of a discretionary decision of our contract building official. So it's just a um few simple changes to the code that we already had that will bring us into compliance. And does anybody have any questions about that?
Paul.
So certainly no concerns about this. I guess the one question that I do have, how would this come before the council? Should this ever come before the council? Would this be a a regular weekly meeting? Would we have to have a special session?
Um, we'd probably have, that's a good question. I'll probably learn that in that webinar that I take tomorrow or the next day. Um, but it would, there there's a certain time limit and there's um, I kind of put some of the um, some of the what was required in that background. But I don't know if it necessarily said that. I would guess that um at this point, to meet the time requirements and to just go over this, we'd have a special meeting for that. Um, and it I would have, I can look into that then and get back to you for sure.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Good question.
Okay, any other questions from Melanie on this subject? No, so what you're looking for tonight is a motion uh to begin this process, is that right? Okay.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two and ordinance amending section fifteen point zero eight point zero thirty, Board of Appeals Title Fifteen Buildings and Construction of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Very well said. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I've got first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, people. Okay, we are now at citizen and community group comment for the second time. Do we have anybody in the holding?
I don't have anybody.
No, okay, I'm going to move right along. We are at mayor council reports and comments, and I will start off with you, Jerry.
Um, thank you, staff, for making this a pretty short and sweet meeting. Um, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for driving us along. Um, I appreciate you guys and and thank you for the the Valentine's gift. This the tonight, that was really nice. Um, my wife is enjoying it right now, since I can't eat candy. But I appreciate it all the all all the more. Um, yeah, you guys have a great night. Have a great, have a great next couple of weeks and see you guys at the next meeting.
Thank you. Paul.
Uh, yeah, just thanks for all who showed up here, the staff for sticking it out on a uh Valentine's Day evening. But yeah, thanks so much. And uh Melanie, really appreciate the email that you sent out on Friday, that Friday email and and uh touching base with us ahead of time too. That that was really helpful. Thank you.
All right, Charity.
I want to thank the community members that have uh signed up online and and watched us and a couple of the community members that spoke out tonight. Thanks for taking the time out of your schedule to reach out to us. We appreciate it. Uh, thank you for the Valentine's gift. That was very sweet. And um Melanie, appreciate you uh reaching out to me on Friday. And as I'm sure you did to the whole council, just a little, you know, touch base. And um I I like that. That was kind of nice. Uh, thanks, everybody, for a speedy evening. Love it. And look forward to seeing you guys in a couple of weeks.
Okay, Justin.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Melanie. Uh, the gift was, the chocolate was good. My daughter grabbed all that stuff in there and started throwing it around. So I gotta go clean that up next.
Didn't think about that. Sorry about that.
It's all good. She had a blast. So that's all that matters. But yeah, appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie.
I just want to say happy birthday to our beautiful state of Oregon. And uh, thank you, staff, for everything that you do. Um, and I guess I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, Katie. And for me, I want you all to go home and enjoy your significant other. It's Valentine's. I tried to push this as fast as possible. So have a good holiday and we'll see you next time around. Thank you. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.